Good evening and welcome to May 2nd, West Liberty City Council Meeting. Here in attendance is Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember Dominguez, and Councilmember Mayor Protam McBarren. I'm also serving as mayor since Mayor Anderson is unavailable tonight. And I believe Councilmember Smith is also available. There's a band concert tonight. So we'll go ahead and get started. Also in attendance, City Manager Gerst, City Deputy Clerk Terry Holford, and City Communication Specialist Brittany. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda? And second? Okay, and I wanted to make mention that you all should have the revised agenda, which we've had printed out in plenty of time, but we had to do one line item off of it. As well as just make sure to update the vendor vouchers. So just wanted to make that clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving agenda? I'll post, question carries. Approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? In regards to the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor Protam, if I can, have a moment to go over the treasury report? Just on the first page, I'd like to draw your attention down to the midsection where it says Record of Cash. And so within that, again, that lists all of the city's checking and savings accounts. And then the information that you're seeing in there is based on reconcili- reconciliation between the city's general ledger and the bank accounts. And so it's clear, you know, without standing checks, cash on hand, and deposits that are in transit, meaning that those are going to be credit cards or deposits that we had. It does not go in until the first of next month. But I also want to let you know that our difference that we have is a stormwater utility adjustment. Currently, right now, our stormwater utility is reporting in revenues. However, it's not pulling over to the cash. So what I've done is I put it in parentheses. It's cash that we have in the bank, but it's in parentheses to with, to take it off, so it matches your cash sheets. And so we'll be working within code and we'll have that addressed. And so the treasures report that you have in front of you is balanced with the bank and the general ledger, and that's identifying what the difference is. And then when we have that corrected, then we'll provide you that information. And then you'll have the updated for the March report then. You have any questions?
Just basically, there was a glitch in code. So on item 740, which is the stormwater utility and the crashing that place report is a problem.
Which, right, is that correct? Yep, yep, but it is the revenue balance that would be in there. And so once we get it corrected and I can run a new report, then we can provide you the updated where it shows it in the cash balance and they're in balance. But this is how we do the adjustment to show how general ledger and how the bank cash matched at this point in time.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All approved for consent agenda. I'll post, question carries. My item four, the beer and liquor license. You will see we've got a beer and liquor license state of Iowa ADP form for Liberty Public Apps. And upon reading through this, it does sound like this is only for a five day term. So it's a special exception effective July 25th to July 30th of this year. So I'm kind of assuming that it is for rag bribe events because it's a strictly due for outdoor services. Okay. So this would be above and beyond their normal permit, correct?
But if you, another. I was gonna say you can go ahead and if you want to make the motion a second, then we can talk a little bit more about what's required of that special permit.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Any further discussion?
So with, with a rag bribe, essentially, it's a special permit that allows someone with a liquor license to be able to serve outside of their premises. And so in order to do so, they have to request a special permit for that. And it's a short period of time because they're only looking to have it in association with a beer garden for the event of that day. Through the RagBri Committee, it's, and Brittany can speak too, it's my understanding that they will be providing, they have the license, they'll be providing that, so. And there'll be a further request for the city to utilize Ronnie Duke Park is the garden, the beer garden area. But that was the first step they wanted to work on, the licensing. And then they understand that they'll have to go to the next step by requesting the use of the Ronnie Duke Park and request special permission for alcohol in the park.
I'm assuming like the application for this, or is it they don't do it specifically there outside of there?
Oh yeah, it has some very strict rules. They have to abide by, they have to have only one entrance. It has to be gated. They cannot have any glass. It has to be specifically within the area that they've provided, where they draw it up and provide. They can't have anybody leaving the area with drinks. They have to stay within that area. So it's, it's a big responsibility to have.
We've done with the beer and liquor before.
Maybe a first sign. We've had businesses who have had them outside of their businesses. And they, and if you remember, I think the last one in 2018, we had a business and they used the orange fencing and they gated off. Because again, that's what's required and recommended, that it's gated, so that way you can manage entrance and exit.
But it was within their business?
It was, they had to apply for a special permit for that day because anytime it leaves the, goes outside of the business, then it has to have a special permit because you're not able to leave with a drink in hand.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Of the beer and liquor license? I, I'll post, question carries. Hey, we'll move on to reports. We've got Leo.
Got about four things. So well, number two, later in the agenda, you're gonna go through well, number two recommendation for the phase one contract. The phase two, which you guys remember was putting in a double door, a driveway, and then kind of segmenting off the well area with wall. That, phase two, we're doing a walkthrough, what we call pre-construction meeting with contractors tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. at the, at the powerhouse. And then we bid that on the 11th. And then we come back to you for the next council meeting, May 16th. And you'll have a public hearing first. And then we can make a recommendation over whether you want to accept the danger if you get vengefully. So that's, that's well, number two on phase two. Number, second thing on my list was nodding circle. We've already got it surveyed. We've got an engineer working on it. Things are looking pretty good in that arena. We've got all kinds of questions about things that we've been talking to Adam about and moving forward. So that's in, in good position right now. Number three is Columbus Street Sidewalk. We provided some preliminary plans to the city. Adam and I met with a couple of the landowners. Not always the people in favor, but saying, hey, this is what we want to do, your access. So our next steps are to take it to the DOT and say to the DOT, is this reasonable? Do you want something different? Because it's on their right way. And then we'll come back to you with here's, here's kind of what we gathered from your landowners. And here's what we gathered with the DOT, what makes sense. That, that one's moving along. We also gave it to All American to provide us cost us. We gave you a cost that's been a while back. That's just engineer numbers. Now we want to, All American, we want them to use their, their numbers if they would, their, their line item, but there's gonna be some ads that they have to do that, that were involved.
This is this, this is the east side?
This is Columbus. This is on Columbus from subway all the way down to the, I forget. It used to be the little Mexican restaurant.
Yeah.
That, that, okay. In, in, in the highway right away. Okay, so that's, that's number three. Number four is the west side storm analysis that we're doing. We are complete with our modeling. We definitely have found some areas that we understand there's some depth. What we did with the modeling is it comes up with depths of depth during a normal flow. How, how much does a street pond in these areas? And what we haven't done now is our next steps are to take those things and say, now what if we put two more intakes in here? How does it outland? Can it get out to these outlets? There's two outlets that go out to these creeks. And is it gonna do you any good or does it back up? Or do we need to do something at the outlet? And that's our next steps that will be probably coming back to you within about a month. All right, that's all I had tonight.
Okay, any other questions for the agenda question? Do you remember when we were talking about the looking into that, if there was like access ways to finish that street by the Walnut Street Apartments? Mr. Junker came and talked to the council. Have we followed up on any of that or we didn't be direct anything?
Um, we, I have not worked with Leo on that information. However, we did sit down and we had a, a, a discussion with the developer. And, and, and there's some options out there, but it's, it's just still. Yeah, it's just still something that it, it has to do with the developer acquiring land. And then, but since they're focused on the project that's going up now, then there's gonna be some further discussion. I know Ken has also spoke with DPOC with regards to that. So I, at, at the end of the day, I don't have an update other than it's discussion that's moving.
Yes, we also talked about speed bumps. Yeah, the possibility of speed bumps. Has there been any inquiry, whether that's a city thing? Or are those streets private?
So we need to, I have not had the opportunity to set a public safety committee meeting. And so Chief and I have a laundry list of things, so we can make sure we add that to that discussion. And then we'll take a look through code or see if there's anything that, you know, that we wouldn't be able to work with them or just get a verification on that.
Awesome, thank you.
I would like to add, you did tweak my brain and what, what's left of this brain that I have. I do remember. And what I did do is a long time ago, and I forgot to look for it. We did look at a separate in and out of that edition. And we even presented it to council. It was 10 years ago, plus maybe. And I thought I still might have those drawings and I would send them to Lee, but I did not check. But now that you reminded me, I will go back and see if I can, I'm not guaranteeing I can find it. But I, because that was before a new server program. And it didn't go anywhere. It was kind of something we gave to you and we, you know, it didn't develop. The council at that time didn't want us to pursue it. But I still might have it. A lot of times I can go back to those old files. I have a lot of things on Short Street because of all the things we did in the past with the financing and funding and approvals. I'll check into it.
I'll look in our archives as well. We do not have much of that.
If you have contact for that gentleman, maybe you can update him.
I think we've added his address for the record at least.
Yep, yes, right. We have, we have a contact.
Any other discussion for the engineer? Okay, moving on, we've got staff reports. So right now we got speaking follow up waves. April report. I, I have one question. For Adam. And it's down middle of the page and the sentence begins attended safety training on confined spaces. And then it has low slash two. I was just curious as to what that means.
Lockout tag out.
Ah, thank you. I couldn't figure out what, what that meant. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for Adam? You're starting the sidewalk quadrant.
I'll just see.
That, so the sidewalk, so this quadrant has already been marked out. Eddie did that in about a day, day and a half. And we have already fixed the set of squares that the city had because of the tree roots or this, that, or the other. And we've actually fixed some other squares from water leaks last fall. And then did some ADA mats in that section too. So yeah, city's portion is done for this quadrant. Just have to move on with the rest of it.
Which quadrant is it? Is it?
Three.
Four, oh, it's on three. So that's northeast of town? The northeast side?
The north side of Fifth Street, the east side of Columbus Street. And it's the northeast like portion of the town.
Okay. All right, thanks. Anybody else have any questions? Electric Department? Any questions?
I could just add under the electric department, Ed and I had a meeting today, a telephone meeting today with BHNG, which included some discussion with regards to the Meadows development, the BIC development, and then the Rainbow Maxson project, going over specifications, working through some questions with the engineers. So, and we will, I've got some things to follow up with the engineers on. And so Ed and I have been working together on, on those development questions and inquiries and looking at codes. And we can talk a little bit more. It kind of falls into the utility committee that we had the other day. So just to add on what some of the other things that we've been doing, so.
Police Department? Anybody have any questions? The police department, nice report to you for.
I think the only thing is I got to do with the priest, are you thinking about sending this option or are you gonna put it up?
So I reached out to the city manager and the interim city clerk to find out what the process was. We utilized an old posting that we had done and it's a sealed in process. So I rewrote what we would need for the priest and I turned it in. And I think we'll need to adjust the timeframes because once we're ready to actually post it, that'll change. And then we're gonna, I think, post it a little more locally because we have some local interest in it. And then we'll go there. I think we'll probably be ready to post it in the next couple of moons, I would say, but that's, I mean.
Yep, that's on our, on our part. And Chief did send that over to us. And just with our work right now, we, we haven't had an opportunity to follow up with him. But I would agree, we should be able to get that posted in.
They've been out of service for a while.
It was out of service when I heard it.
And I did communicate with Chief Wirling that after the council meeting and stuff, I would work with him to go ahead and get that posted. I posted the electric one last time, so I'm familiar with that process.
I'm pretty sure it's been out of service since I've. Doesn't work as a paperweight either, so.
Any other questions, concerns on reports?
I'd just like to add to the chief's report, he as well has, we've been working together. We've been going over, we've got an event coming up, which Chris Jasper will speak a little bit more to that. We talked about that. We've been going over wages. We've just been also, you know, communicating, you know, primarily on staffing. And then we've got some plans to sit down and meet and go over some, some other things. So communications have been really good between us and, and I appreciate it. He's also assisted me. We had an occupational health program. I had not had an opportunity to follow up and make some contacts. And so Chief took the initiative and he made a call for us and he got some information put together for the safety committee. So I'm appreciative of that. So some good teamwork going on.
Good, good. So there's no action items for this. We'll go ahead and move on to my item six, vendor voucher planes list. Meeting, oh, committee meetings. Sorry. That's okay. I was ahead of myself. Yes, sorry, committee meetings, which by the way, we had two, like, at that time. We've had one test. Of course, and the, so Dana, you want to talk about the firing of the DMS? So we met last week and looked over some feedback from the discussion from talking to the city of Solon. How they kind of went through the process and we got some really good clarifying information that was keeping the task force a little bit stuck. And I think our next steps is, we know as a task force, how we want to move forward. There may be a little bit more finessing to make sure that all of the, the members of the task force, as well as the fire chief, we want to bring the fire chief into. But I think it looks really positive considering Eric and Mindy were both representatives of the fire department. Very much on board, I think, in the direction we're going and believes that the fire chief will be on board as well. It's kind of been hard a little bit for Mark and Dick because they are planting right now. But we're still trying to keep that communication going with them on those really important items. And, and I've had a couple of private conversations with Dick and then bringing it back to the task force to make sure that his voice is still there. So we're, we'll be communicating via email in the next couple of weeks. And then hopefully we'll have a work session on the books for you guys for the first council meeting in June. So we can bring you those five precious documents that we want to present to the council, which will be the actual 28 year agreement, the bylaws or policies and procedures is what Solon calls them. The lease agreement for the building and the equipment. And us, us, kind of, I don't, I know our lawyer might not, I can call it settlement agreement, but I see it as a settlement agreement, so we can get the litigation removed. And then what's the other item? Can't remember it. We, but there, there are five items.
Yes, yes.
But I think you should have all of that very clear for you all at the work session of the first week of June. And then hopefully we can start some transitions and things like that if everything goes well. Any questions?
You've all done a great job and, and we've learned so much going through. I know for, you know, some folks think that, you know, it's, it's taken a while. But, you know, we, we've grown and the communication has grown and, and we've learned a lot more about how, you know, each entity works and, and it's created, I think, a trustworthy and a respectful work environment between all of us that we can grow from, so.
Yeah, and I was thinking because, why didn't we meet with Solon a year ago, right? But then I always try to find the positive and everything. And I think the time that the, the task force has had together from all the parties has really allowed us to understand each other better, get to know each other better and, and do some feeling in that regard. And so I think, I believe everything happens for a reason. And also Solon also told us it took them over a year to do it as well with many, many meetings. And so I think we're, we were doing a good job in making sure that we continue the momentum and kept going and working together, which is the most important. So, yeah, that's my update for that. Hey, thank you. Utility committee, not a utility committee meeting?
Yeah, so we hold a utility committee meeting here. And I'll just brief, talk about the agenda and then if the committee members would like to give a little input on that as well. But, you know, the, the number one thing we wanted to do is hear from the developers. And Jason Dumont came in on behalf of the BIC development. And he provided some really good information to the committee. He talked about his experience in developing in other communities. We talked about the cost of the infrastructure, went through those things. We talked about, you know, opportunities that because we will be working with Mr. Dumont, that development with TIP. But also at some point in time, you know, explain that that may go away and maybe look at some other rebate opportunities. So we brought that up. And so the committee's agreed, I can continue to look into those. So we can bring some options for not just TIP and abatement, but what other options can we offer as a marketing tool with the utility? Along with that, we talked about, we have the customer service rules. And there were a couple of other pieces that we talked about that I just asked the committee that we have a little more time and I can bring them back some more information. But mostly it was just connecting. And I think the important piece of it was having that conversation with that developer and, and hearing from what they had to say, so we can continue to work on building, you know, that relationship and marketing our community. So and if the committee members wanted to share what they, what they had takeaways or what they felt from the meeting. I thought it was a really good meeting and Ed also attended and Sherry was also there for that discussion, so.
Yeah, I think it worked well, learned a little bit more about developer, you know, necessities, agreements, so.
Very appreciate that, that. Dumont came to speak about those. Almost kind of gets it, work more in the future as well.
And then just tied into our follow up with the BHNG meeting today and, and just again, going, keeping that momentum going. So we know that most of them are breaking ground or moving dirt. So we have some catching up to do, but BHNG felt positive that we could get, they could get some things to us and, and in a timely process, so. And we also quickly talked about, we didn't go into details because I said, Chief Whirling and Chris would be here to speak about the water tower and the signals, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Now we're going to vendor vouchers. We've got a vendor voucher plan list. Any amount of $239,571 to play with that? Want to go through? No seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? I have one quick question that I just saw right now, so. Oh guys, I didn't bring it to you all before this. On number 65, where it says payroll including, then it says ambulance quarter. And it says 158,000. Can you explain kind of where that amounts?
If I just ran the description in together, so, and I just noticed I had a typo on it. It's not payroll, it's payable, but either way, yeah. Yes, so we have for the, for number 65, that was just reflecting city regular payroll to include the first quarter of the ambulance segment.
Okay, yeah, perfect. That's all I have. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Do I, I'm, or, hearing none, do I have all in favor? I'll post, question carries. Okay, now we're to public comments. I guess I'll go around and see if we have any, first of all, is there anybody in the audience that has any public comments? Yes?
Yes.
Good evening, Councilman Brooks, we leave. When I, that was three, just a friendly reminder of next Friday, May twelve, we have. The West Liberty Business Association quarterly meeting, also we lead annual meeting and the first in modern history. Since nineteen seventy-nine, first nineteen seventy-nine, uh, the mayor state of the city address. To me, and I invite all the council members and the city administration has indicated that they will be able to publish that meeting, so everybody. Who, um. For to it, could be a good time, minute to reply, and this will be.
Once I do again?
Uh, maybe twelve.
Well, that's all.
That's why I have one.
Um, thank you, Mr. Brooks, okay, um. What about, uh, council members, you have anything?
I think from the public, I did sit in with our library board for their meeting, that was. Formative and nice, I thought. Lots of things going on at the library, yeah. And there's snacks. Yes, I'm just, I'm impressed with all the work that they do there, there's a lot more going on at the library. I'm excited to. Do you have one more?
Uh, council members, do you have anything? I don't think so. I do not have anything, what about you, councilman?
I remember one thing, there is openings on the Board of Assessments. Or Board of Adjustments, saw it online, just wanted to say. Basically, the job.
Uh, what about from City Hall? Uh, is there, has there been any public comment?
Um, I've had, we did have a community member, uh, reach out to us. Uh, following up with us on the continued water leak that they have. Um, I think it was on Sixth Street, um, and so Danny Goodell and I met with. Um, the property owner and we have some follow up to do with, um, and Danny and I spoke. Um, about the leak and, um, making sure that we are getting it handled in a timely basis, it's been going on for over a year. Um, the bigger part of the reason being is that. Um, first it was parts, then trying to schedule a contractor because it's a more work than what our staff. Um, and then, then winter came on and so the good thing is, is warmer weather's here, so getting the contractor back in and getting the part. Um, so we can resolve the issue, um, because it has caused some mud in the streets and. And some things, so we wanna make sure we're getting that taken care of on a timely basis, so we did talk about that. Um, and then I had other, I had some staff members provide some other ones that follow up with Danny with as well, so. So we have that, um, and I did attend my, um, first we lead meeting then last week, so I got to return after a few years and so. Um, they're just as active and busy as ever, so that was. Uh, good, good information there too, so, um, that's all I have.
I do have a couple, um, just through social media, there was one person that reached out. Um, regarding what they were spraying around town, uh, I think there was some concern that there were chemicals being sprayed. Um, that's not chemicals, they are watering the sod that was. Placed last week, uh, so if you see spray your trucks, it's water. Um, and then the other, um. Comment that I have seen online, both in messages and on comments on post. There is a lot of talk again about, uh, citywide cleanup, um, or a city available. Brush. Drop off location, um, so just so, I, I don't think it's anybody looking for specific answers, um, but there are quite a few comments. On the topic, so that will probably be brought up.
Aren't we having, is that every person?
Yep, uh, the comment that keeps popping up is having a central dump location that people can just bring it to rather than having to bag it. Or wait for the pickup.
What, what's the, um. Is it because they dump, people dump other stuff and that's the issue?
So the DNR has some pretty strict regulations, um, it's not. I mean, other larger, there's larger communities that have those, I mean, we have the Muscatine County Transfer Station. So that's available to us within our county, um, there are municipalities that are within the county transfer station areas, so they have a. Closer proximity, um, but, um, the DNR do, they do closely regulate. Um, due to not, you know, other dumping or other hazardous material could possibly, um, be dumped in that, so, and then trying to mitigate. Those things, it, it's a significant cost, so it has to be monitored and, and, you know. And, you know, that's the reason why we do the curbside, but if it's for a larger debris, um, again, we can, um. Direct them to the transfer station for that, uh, purpose. And we did extend the burn, you know, the burning, uh, for a couple more weeks, so we've provided, you know, that opportunity as well. And that was communicated, um, so, yeah. And then as far as the citywide cleanup and, I mean, again, I know. Um, there are a lot of community, you know, there's few community members, um, again, we would have to direct them to the transfer station. Um, it's a significant, um, cost, um. And yes, as much as we promote, we, we want our community members to, you know. Clean and, and remove debris and things from their households, I mean, for, um. That cost, um, to our budget is, I mean, when we did it a few years ago, um. It was around sixty-five thousand in addition to our budget. And so we are just now, you know, trying to climb out of, um, and building our, our reserves back up. So we, we don't have it, I mean, we can always look at another increase to our customers. If we want to go forward in the future and, and, and have one, but we would want to have that included in the rate. Uh, study and, and it would be an expense that we would have to offset because it's, you know, it's a costly. Costly event. No, you're fine.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to send out, like, I think at the beginning of the year, you guys set up a recycle calendar. Send out like a, uh, a separate paper where you give, for patients, when people can take. Their stuff from Toronto, and take that tire or anything, certain like big ones and.
Yeah, that's a. Yeah, that's good input, I think that we definitely, um, we can have Brittany put, make that a part of our, like, our educational materials and we can incorporate that, so that's good input on that. In the meantime, we can, um, in the meantime, we could still work on posting like with the transfer station and find out about. Cause I know there's different drop offs for electronics and, and things of that, so we can, we could work with Adam on that and collect that information. Um, I also know, you know, there's different scrap metals and pieces like that, I mean, we do do, you know, some of that, uh, curbside pickup, but again, when you're talking a large abundance, you know, so.
Hey, is that all of the discussion? Okay, I've been moving on to new business. Uh, we've got discussion and appropriate action for the week, we're collecting twenty twenty-three. I can request, so, so the motion. Hey, further discussion, we've got Francisco here. Um, who heads the, is the Latino or the King of the Ninos, that don't kind of answer questions? Anybody has? Um. Does anybody have any questions or do you want to? Offer anything else besides?
Um, I mean, the only thing I have is certification on what is needed for you.
Only you can put in a second, another outlet connector for two twenty one. Is possible, that's all.
That's part of it all?
See, I was about to.
For audio.
For the audio? I think that, does that?
It's on Spencer Street, right, and that, cause you put the state.
Yeah, the same policy, we said, what are there, we put in another one next to, and saying that.
Um, we, we, we can review, um, I know we had talked about doing some upgrades with the farmer's market. Um, I, I just would have to review that. So, um, if council considers to approve, I would just make, um, that. The electrical use and again with affordable bathrooms, we would recommend that you organize those. Um, we can see, as we spoke with the children's festival, um, we can see if we can organize a few, but depending on the attendance level. We would wanna say that you would wanna, you know, establish ordering those bathrooms to cover how many attendees you have. Cause we're not necessarily able to meet that need.
Yeah, cause if we, if, the only hang up is. If we, um, the city provides porta potties for your event, then we're kind of bound to provide it for. Anybody else's event, and we only have so much budgeted. So, in the past and currently, it, it's been up to the organizations. That have been responsible for the porta potties, but. I, I believe we are gonna check and see if we can get the other ones from the other parks moved over. And we give you more, but we don't know if that, if we can do that yet, I think.
No, we don't, um, we were, I was gonna talk to the current contractor that we have and if there was a possibility. That if they were going to be there surveying, um, the other ones, if we could. You know, have additional two or maybe even just a couple dropped off, but. We don't really have it within our budget to do anything of a more of an abundance and it always depends on. The attendees, so I mean, if you have a hundred attendees, you're gonna need more than two or three bathrooms and. Usually a hand washing station and, and so we don't, we don't have that available, cause we don't, the city doesn't own them. Yeah.
How much would it cost, you know, for, or about roughly, like? For just a couple, like, if we could get donation. To, from businesses or, or something like, is that something like?
If they, if the, if the organization wanted to work with, um, different businesses and. Um, but they, they go anywhere, it just depends, it's either a hundred, somewhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty, it just depends on the type. If you're looking at, um, you know, ADA, hand washing, if you're looking at single, um. You know, and again, because it's a short period of an event versus a few days, you know, it may not be as much and. Typically, if you order more than one, then you can get a little more of a discounted rate, so, um.
But I know in the past, we've been able to provide barricades, cones and garbage containers.
Yeah. And the, and the electrical one, we would just need to, I just need to have a little more discussion and. We can work together and, and talk about the stage and what you're needing and, um, and see what we can do to upgrade. I know we had looked at upgrading that pedestal for the farmer's market, so, but I, I had to speak to our electric superintendent a little bit more about that. We said it, so, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think we have my email and stuff, I do mind if you mail you about something else, but it's not, you know. Cause I can, I can work to see if we can get some funds for the. If, if we can move them from the park so that there's bathrooms and stuff available. If we need it.
Any other discussion?
Hopefully it doesn't rain this year. Although it's fun dancing in the rain, but. Yeah.
I know we're very fortunate, both, both events are very well organized and, um, you know. Having that opportunity in our community and it's nice having them together too, because. You can start early in the morning and get to go on later on, you know, so, all day of it, yeah.
Okay, if there's no further discussion.
And this is looking into, you know, like this. Trying to.
Right, and proving that. And yes, and the street closure time, whatever the, yes. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Kara, just, Kara, just for clarification, did you say approved without the restrooms, is that all you guys said?
Oh, they were gonna.
Without the city providing.
Right, right, right.
Without. Perfect, that's what I wanted to make sure, further is your electric without the restrooms, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And Prescott, we'll stay in communication like we always do. Okay, yes.
Bring to you a mom before by insurance.
Yeah, 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 I know you will, yeah, not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Madam Mayor Pretend, um, Sherry had just received some information real quick about the brush. Um, yeah, he wanted to get with them.
So Superintendent Reinhardt reached out and let me know that the transfer station no longer takes brush from West Liberty citizens. So he wanted to make sure that we communicated that.
So, I'll just speak with, I'll just plan on speaking to Adam and, and again, we'll just, you know. See if there's an opportunity, we'll have the discussion, instead of just saying no, what we'll do since they no longer take brush from us. Will, like, time to have the discussion to see what, what we can do.
So, I mean, let's, where does it go?
We have our own, we have a private area, um, again, it's controlled and based on. My knowledge, again, it's, it, the reason why we can't let just anybody go back in there is because.
It's unmonitored.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a secured monitored area, so, um, again, though, I, I will follow up with that and we can check with DNR and see what we can do.
Okay. When? Uh, okay, we're gonna move on, do. Line item B in your business, discussion for enhancing the radio system on the West Liberty Water Tower. Um. Did everybody have a check, what did they found? And do I have any more to? No, can you prove? Uh, second, so this, okay. Further discussion, and I also wanna say that, um. Attending today is Chris Jasper from the Emergency Management, must be. So, uh, it's funny to have him here and he can answer questions to kind of go over this a little bit.
Yes, so thank you for having me, those that don't know me and Chris Jasper, I'm the Director of Emergency Management and Emergency Communications for the county. Um, and so just to, to talk about this a little bit, several years ago, the Muscatine County Joint Communications Commission. Um, was looking into the radio system, at the time, the state of Iowa radio system wasn't quite built yet. Um, the state was just looking into that, so at the time, we actually signed on with the state of Illinois radio system, which is where we're planning to connect with you. Um, we have an antenna on your water tower here with a building, um, around the fenced in area that we take care of, um, to have. Communications out here in this area. Um, with that being said, we also pay a port fee to Illinois to have a certain number of radios connected to that radio system. Which is probably expensive, um, so we've kind of come to a time now that the Iowa system is built, that the Communications Commission was looking at. What we could do to get connected to that system to kind of save some money long term down the road. Um, so they last year have, um, set aside just shy of four million dollars for this project. And they, um. However, with that being said, um, I included a little diagram, which I think is in your packets, um, I know it's probably confusing.
This?
Yes, so. The blue towers that are on the diagram are current Iowa towers. And the black towers are currently county owned towers that I maintain and. So. To connect this new system, um, as you can see on this diagram, having. The connection from the West Liberty Water Tower has to go all the way back, almost to the east side of the county. To a current state owned tower. So because of that distance. Um. The proposal is that we need to put a large satellite on top of the water tower if we move forward with this project. Um, it is an eight foot satellite dish. Um, there were some concerns about that being, um. Um, there were some concerns about that being, um, a large dish in the middle of your park. Which I completely understand. Um, and when you think about it, that. Seems pretty big. Um, so I did have our. Radio vendor send me some pictures of some rea- a recent project that they did, um, so you can kind of see gave what it would look like. Um, it to me, if you look, to me, eight foot seems like huge, but when you look at these pictures, it doesn't quite look so big being so high up in the air. Um. So I guess my, what I'm here to make is I guess to. Seek input. Conversation about, uh, getting an O P to put. The satellite on top of the water tower.
So it would be directly on top, correct?
Uh, we're kind of off to the side. Kind of thinking my directions here to the north. East side, so it'll be pointing back. Towards the east.
And that would be like insured and everything by the county or the state, okay? And my only worry would be the weight of if it if it. Had too heavy, would it damage our water tower?
And so before we obviously proceed with anything, we will have, um, engineers come on and do a structural analysis. Um, we've already had some engineers come out and look from the ground, um, and they did. Get with the water department and got inside to look at the structure. So from what they're seeing from the ground, they don't anticipate any issues.
Correct.
But obviously before we do anything, we would have engineers come on to do structural analysis. That's all part of the contract. And so I guess let me, let me also say this, so being that we're. Um, connected to the Illinois radio system, we're kind of limited on what. Where we're talking. So for instance, when your ambulance goes to Iowa City, which nine nine point nine, sometimes they do. They hit Iowa City and they have no communications with us back here.
Exactly.
So being that this is a state of Iowa radio system, they would have communications with us back here. Not only West Liberty, we have the same problem with Muscatine and it's going to Davenport. We could also enhance them. If the police department happens to go out to the county or in the Johnson County for a pursuit to assist. Um, it kind of limits their communications. So I know. James here and Chief is here kind of, if you had any questions about that and where things get cut off. So it it is improving the system. It's making a huge enhancement for our current system. Like I said, the county has set aside just shy of four million dollars for this because. They realize how crucial public safety communication is. Um, so this is just one kind of piece of that puzzle that we just need this equipment. Um, if you guys have any concerns about it, we would have to find another location. Um, I'm not sure what that would look like with coverage. Um, or or other option is that we would have to try to get fiber to the water tower. The only caveat with that is that at the other end of the connection, we also have to have fiber. And with that, you're risking any construction or anything between here and there, so we cut that line and it's gonna take down our communications, so. Really, this satellite is kind of our best option, but I do understand that there's concerns with how it's gonna look. Um, and so I'm here to answer any questions or see if you can put, like, you have with that.
Is there any additional expense over time of receiving for the natural floor?
No. No, all the fees, uh. We, I obviously pay for the electrical out there, open the gas. We have the generator. Maintenance that we pay, um, basically anything inside that fenced in area there is my responsibility and I pay for all that.
Okay.
And we currently do have, um. Antennas on the tower now.
Yes.
So, um.
With that, is that. Through you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So would that change?
So basically, we're. Essentially swapping and then.
And I noticed on this. In the word. Um, they indicate that there's a. They call it a doghouse. Is that something we're gonna have to have and on the ground?
No, so we currently have a building there already. So we're gonna use that existing building. This is just an example.
Okay.
I I took this just for kind of the diagram of the actual water towers. You can kind of see.
Okay.
Artist rendition, for lack of a better term, what it would look like.
Okay.
Um, and then these other pictures, I don't know. I did send, there was another picture of what it looked like from the ground, but I. Didn't get it until after I had already sent this to Sherry, so I don't know if I got included. I sent it to you like two days after. So I think I got it, but, um, I do have a picture of what it would look like from the ground if anybody.
And then if you send it to me, I can forward that on to you guys. So that's something that I can definitely forward on.
It's just. Have an example of what it would look like from the ground.
Well, it'd be in relation to how large this tower is, is my view.
So we'd be.
And Chris is a junkie. We hit the edge of Iowa City, we lose all communication. So they don't know when we head to hospital. If we head to hospital, they don't know.
And I've experienced that before and I had a. Young person in my vehicle, I've had some suicidal ideation that. I grabbed a parent and took him to the hospital and I didn't know that this happened. And there's no warning, your radio doesn't even say, hey, you're, you're, you're getting out of, out of range. I just still have communication.
Okay.
So I was out of my area. They knew where I was going, but I put a radio and let them know that I was there, that I was in trouble and everything. This is, this is crucial. We're all gonna aspire to this.
And our ambulance gets speed, it just gets really annoying. I see it here to have the color match to the power.
Uh, it. Right now, the plan is leave it white. If he would like us to look into that, I can certainly. We can certainly discuss that.
Coordinate if it was white and then blue with a white skies.
Yeah. Is there a top of your? The top blue or the top white? Which way it is? When we were first discussing.
Believe it's blue.
If that's what you need to do to get it through, I'll paint it like my bososki if I have. So it looks like on that picture, there's already one up there. I don't think that that's still up there. I think there's only antennas up there, but that, I don't know how big that one is just by looking, but it looks like at one time there was one up there.
Yeah. Yes.
I don't think it's, I'm pretty sure.
No, it's not. It's just.
The, um, really recent picture because I took it from a drone that Ming had done and it still has a little.
Does it?
Up there.
I just don't remember. That was just there. I don't remember it.
So essentially, we're just, we're looking at an upgrade to what we, what's existing out there.
For lack of better terms, we're, it it's obviously a lot more complex than this, but for lack of better terms. We're unplugging from the Illinois system and we're gonna plug in an Iowa city. Obviously, there's a whole heck of a lot that needs to go on behind. Behind the scenes for that to happen. Um, but essentially in lack of better terms, that's, that's what we're doing. And it means. Having a bigger area where we can communicate.
Mm hmm. I think that's important too, if there was like a natural disaster that went across county but. Things like that, especially when you do it all on utility, that's a little bit on the outskirts. So, yeah, I think it's definitely necessary. Is there any other discussion?
Um, so, um, Madam Mayor Pretend, what I would do is, um. I I know you have a motion and a second, but I think the consensus to give. Uh, Chris the permission to move forward to work with the engineers so they can verify. If our structure is. Able to hold it and maybe he, we, we have him move forward with that. And then once we are able to get that information from the engineers, um, then we can bring it back and and make sure. That everything is, um.
Yep.
I, but I don't know, Chris, you tell me, because if you move forward on that direction. Do they want us to have an all in, yes, or? Do you mean, you're gonna know better than I am.
As as it stands now, it's just a motion to, um, for enhancing the radio system to be West Liberty Water Tower. With an eight foot satellite dish, appropriate action to send to utility committee for the review, what we have it set at. If we approve, then it gives them an idea of how to move forward and then once we know information, I would assume. We'll come back.
Yeah, by all means, if we do a structure, structural analysis and it doesn't pass for whatever.
Yeah.
More obviously than I can move forward, we're gonna find an alternative. So this is just saying, yes. So I can gather more information. If you want me to come back at a later time before. It gets done, I I'm okay doing that.
No, I think, I think as long as, you know, you're, um. Able to move forward and gather information and then we can. Bring it back to utility committee for further discussion.
We're trying, we're trying to get the project done within the next twelve months. And so if. For some reason, you guys decide you don't wanna do this, we just need to start seeking out an alternate or alternate location. We're gonna have to start with the other towers or if we're gonna. Pay a million dollars for a tower up somewhere or something. Also, just the sooner that I have a better idea if you're okay with it or not, that gives us. To go ahead, to keep moving forward.
We have a motion that needs to move forward, so. Um, so if we gather more details on what we need to know. If you do put up a tower though, and I'll make sure you put a curtain in it.
That's really neat, that.
I'm just gonna throw this out there, but it's at least a million dollars to build a tower and. Their housing.
I think what I hear is that your consensus is to move forward. And then it's just bringing that, just to make sure the engineer piece of it and that its structure is sound and then, yeah.
So this is a consent vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have one more thing and I'm here.
Yes.
Um, so when I took over emergency management, one of the things that we, I discovered was that. Uh, communication has been lacking in years past with systems, with other communities. And so that's one thing that I'm trying to fix. And so recently, we've, uh, had a conversation with Mayor Anderson a couple of weeks ago. And so one of the things that we. Discovered, not only here in West Liberty, but all over the county, um, there's a question about. Outdoor weather sirens and severe weather. Um, and so emergency management has moved forward and on May thirtieth, here in West Liberty at six thirty, at the West Liberty Community Center. And then on May thirty first, the following day, at Musser Public Library in Muscatine at six thirty. Um, I'm gonna be hosting a. Town hall meeting. To go over severe weather procedures, what the sirens mean. I'm gonna throw in some nine one one stuff just because we'll have folks there, so, um. If you guys have anybody. Contacting you about those issues, please, um, encourage them to attend this meeting. If you guys. Six thirty. If you guys. Yes. We actually, thank you, the chief and to the, we actually just got the venue finalized yesterday, so I'm gonna create a flyer and I will push that out to Brittany. And we'll get that pushed out to the community and not only here, but all over the county. Um, so I just wanted to throw that invite out there. Um, cause not only you folks, but as well as the community, um, that those two days are available, that I will be pulling over some emergency management stuff. And Chris wants everybody in the county who attend, so he's making two different locations, so whichever you can attend. So. This isn't specifically for West Liberty, it's for anybody in the county that wants information except two locations.
Okay, good. My car is. Alright, thank you for coming. We're gonna move on to I, the heading is Resolution two oh two three oh five oh two dash three five. It's the resolution authorizing adoption of. amended and, uh, to reset policy procedures regarding municipal security disclosure. Um, do I have a motion? Second. One motion, one second.
That's fine.
Alright, and, um. As far as the discussion goes, I believe this is routine because it's a compliance issue that we have to abide by. For our bonds, here we found also, as you, as. We see, uh, compliance. Is that, is that correct? You are correct.
Can we explain how this works?
And how it works is that, um, the. The city clerk is your, um, compliance officer within the organization. And, um, I should say city clerk treasurer is with, uh, the compliance officer within the agency. And as you can see on, um. It has the written procedures, so the appendix two, written procedure regarding continuing disclosure, um, under the federal, um. Requirement, we have to abide by, um, all of those, um, steps and there's. Um, reporting, uh, compliance. Uh, so when you hear that we're working with. Uh, U M B, our financial advisors, when we talk about doing continuing disclosures. It's a requirement, um, that we have for the compliance piece to report for revenues or expenditures. Um, for those bond investors, so they know, um, how the city is fiscally managing, um, their funds. So that we, um, are meeting our bond, um, covenants, um, our requirements.
For working with.
Yes, yeah. And then we're also required to report any new debt, um. That would include any leases, um. Or equipment, um, that all has to go through the same process that we do. For our revenue bonds and our general obligation bonds. And, um. And as you work through it, you can see, I mean. Yeah. Yeah, and then there was just like a little overview flyer that kind of takes it through. So we work with, uh, Dorsey and Whitney, um. They are also our bond attorneys that we utilize, um, when we're going through the bonding process as well, so. And we're just required to make sure we update that.
Is there any further discussion? Yeah, we've been done. It's a go call vote. So council member Martinez. Council member Martinez, yeah. Council member Schultz.
Yes.
And, uh, I go guess. Motion carries. Uh, my item B, Resolution two oh two three oh five oh two dash three six. A resolution to prepay estimate another view from all American country in amount of two hundred and thirty one thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars. Uh, in regards to the Rainbow Maxon Street project, don't have a motion. Hey, any further discussion? This is just standard pay estimate number two for the project, is that correct?
Project's going very well. All Americans made great progress, thank you guys.
We're on our timeline, right? Alright, any other discussion?
We know the farmers would like rain, but it's working really well for us on the street.
At least it speaks that, right? This is another roll call vote, so I may go ahead, um, council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Domingo.
Yeah.
Council member Martinez. Okay, who carries?
Right.
Uh, resolution on my item E is two oh two three oh five oh two dash three seven. It's a resolution to approve and accept the bid from York Playwell Corporation in amount of three hundred and ninety six thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. That was a well number two, right?
Well, number two, phase one.
Phase one. Uh, do I have a motion? For a second, so. Any further discussion?
I noticed that you've worked with and they've worked with us before.
Probably the most of anybody. Another, um, another welder at Kahoy, they worked with you also, they didn't put a. Put a bid in and they called to apologize. They had some problems and they said they just couldn't kind of get it together in time. I sent them after Danny. I said, well, make sure you tell Danny, cause, uh, you, you know, I think it's good to have another welder in town, but we're very happy with.
Any other discussion? Yeah, here none, roll call vote. Council member Martinez, council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Domingo, yeah, and I, yes. Okay, we've got, um, my item is client, I have asked, Resolution two oh two three oh five. Oh, two dash eight. It's a resolution to approve West Liberty Police Officer part time wage increase twenty seven fifty for an hourly wage. Rate. So I have a motion on the table. On the second.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? The chief Orling is here and to answer questions.
Is this what I'm terrible?
It's going to make us competitive. Uh, currently, we offer, I think it's twenty two dollars an hour for our part timers. Um, there are other local similarly sized agencies that are paying over twenty six. Um, so. Um, so I was talking with Councilmember Dominguez before um. We have an impending departure with Dustin resigning for personal reasons. Um, and then we have officers expecting a little one. So we're going to be needing to utilize our part timers. And right now, I did carry a little response from them because for twenty two dollars an hour. They can stay more at their own agency and make. Significant effort anymore. But this will make us competitive in this area that we may actually draw some more part time helpers. Um, and I think they will be more apt to seat out hours so I can give my officers some time off because. In the time that I've been here, I have had time off frozen probably well over a year just because we can afford to let people take time. So I think this will give us the ability to do that.
How how deep is your roster?
Currently, we have six.
And will the full time police officers get the same rate?
The full time officers get their overtime rate for their based on whatever their salary is. This is only for people who are listed as part time ops.
Do they get overtime too, part time?
The part timers just get the part time rate.
Okay.
And I ask. No, no. Well, they would get part time if they were to over forty hours, but the part times. No, we the most, I mean, on average, we don't have anybody working over twelve hours. Usually what chief is. Right now been able to is if he's lucky is to get one shift coverage. Um, this is not going to have a, you know. For this time period is not going to have a significant impact on the budget. Because again, he hasn't even been able to utilize most of that part time budget because he hasn't had anyone, you know, interested in filling that. Um, so we we still have some budget room in there to utilize it. And this is just in hopes that we can, again, a competitive rate and market that. Um, and again, he would go through his evaluations with his full time staff, but. Um, we should be close to um based on their experience and their time. Um, they should be close to that, but is again, they're always offered the opportunity. On a forty hour work week, they have the time and a half opportunity and and holiday, but anything like that and their benefits. So.
And because part time don't get the benefits, but the full time do. Okay. And you have to include that in the compensation.
Yeah. And we currently pay out the sick. They have the opportunity to have sick leave paid out. So then. You um also include that in overall with their annual income would be based off of that. So.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for explaining that. Okay, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, the roll call vote. Uh, council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Dominguez. Yes. Council member Martinez. And I vote yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Um. Then move on to line item G ordinance two oh two three four one eight dash three. It's. The ordinance amending the zoning from R one to R two of the vice division. Uh, second reading with consideration of waiving the third and final reading. And this also would be a roll call vote. So can I have a motion?
Motion to the second reading. With consideration.
What I have in second, second. Okay, is there any further discussion?
And we've not received any uh public correspondence with regards to this ordinance.
Okay, um, council member Martinez.
Sure.
Council member Dominguez.
Yes.
Council member Schultz.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Okay, finally. The last item on the list here is set a date for part in record session to go over the master part plan and feasibility study. And it would be potentially six P M on May sixteenth. And your second May meeting. So. And I know that we've been meaning to try and cover this, but so many things have come up. So I think that's I'd like to. Go over what Nick has put a lot of work into.
And he requested the six P M because he wanted to make sure that you guys had enough time to ask any questions that you guys had. So when you reached out to me. We had originally talked about six thirty and then after discussion, he said that six P M would be better than you guys have enough time and won't feel rushed to go through that.
Okay. So um there's no action we have to approve on this. It's just.
It's just the consent.
Isn't. Set it to that the work session. Okay. Okay, everybody's in consensus. Okay. So um that seems to be everything on our agenda. Can I say one thing?
Yes.
So in your packet, there's still the things that I'm going to remove. I don't know if you all want an explanation for that or if we're able to talk even.
Yeah, I can. And I and I apologize. I kept um so with um you had on your previous agenda, um we had a resolution to approve. And um council member McFerrin or council member McDominguez can bring you um a little more information on it and we've worked with we need as well. Um, the agreement that's before you um had not, we didn't get an opportunity to get updated one. And then um and I'll let council member Dominguez speak to it, but then there there's going to be a two part agreement. And so. Um, I just corresponded with them that we wanted to have them both in the same time. Uh, because they they work with each other. So if you would council member Dominguez, share your news because I know you've been.
I've been waiting so long to say that. Okay, so um Cat Quintis, Catherine Quintis, she's the um director of, I think, community engagement or something at We Care. We Care is a. For profit childcare um software program out of Los Angeles and um. It's it's actually really incredible. It's spelled W E E C A R E. And what We Care does is um. They have this network of childcare providers all over the country um and their software and their support, their customer service. Um, from their team in Los Angeles assists childcare providers in in. Doing all the business aspects and promoting their childcare um to to kind of fill in those spots too. And then also for parents, it they make it really easy for parents to go on um find childcare when they need it. Do virtual tours or set up for pay through the app. It's it's an amazing, amazing company, right? Um, so We Care um has recently partnered with the Department of Defense, the U S Department of Defense. To administer a childcare pilot program for U S National Guard and Army Reserve families. To help them find backup. Weekend and ongoing childcare in their area. Um, the pilot program is funded through the Department of Defense using federal dollars allocated for childcare support of military families. And in March. Um, Catherine reached out to me. Um. We have a mutual colleague and reached out to me and to discuss this one of the kind of opportunity. Um, and what would look like with the city of West Liberty and not only us, but anybody I found out within a hundred mile radius. Um, before we thought it was fifty, he said that it was a hundred mile radius of West Liberty. So um. She offered to talk about this public private partnership between the city and the Department of Defense. And We Care. So out of over, after much discussion, and I really want to thank uh Mayor Protown, Vera McFerrin and. City uh manager, I'm secretary, but city manager, Lee Gertz. And um also Ken for. The last minute kind of rush of we need to get on the books and get these scheduled to so we can meet with the people from the Pentagon and. Things like that because it was pretty rushed, but they were all on vacation and they made themselves available so we could get this in the works. Um, so out of that, over a hundred thousand cities in the U S, We Care chose us and one other city in the whole nation. To have this program. Um, which is wonderful. So. The the awesome thing about this is we don't have to allocate or match any funds to the program. We Care will bring all the required funding through its partnership. Um, with the Department of Defense. And We Care will also take on the bulk of the administrative and operational workload. So there's no extra stress uh stress on our staff. Um, very little. Um, the city will collaborate with trying to make sure that. Our um military members know about this program. Um, and I think Brittany will have a a a a close partnership hopefully with Kat on um. They'll they're they're willing to provide all the materials and work with kind of getting the word out. Um, to bring attention to the program and highlight um. West Liberty's dedication to supporting the military families in West Liberty, but also within that hundred mile radius. The pilot will cover over the hundred mile radius, which he says covers thirty eight major cities. Major in Iowa, I guess. Um, it's about twelve or more counties and it will impact thousands of military um people. Within that range. So I really want to thank everybody for working on this. This is really, really great for West Liberty and for. You know, I think it's like sixteen counties of people. And Lee, I know you've had a really close relationship with throughout your whole life with specifically the. The guard and reserves. So I don't know if you want to speak more on this.
Yeah, I I'm and just, you know, to follow up when through our discussion, I shared with them, you know, the challenges. Of being a military wife and, you know, I was very fortunate that I had family that I can lean on, but not all. I can remember some weekends picking up and taking care of other, you know, um soldiers, uh children, because they didn't have that opportunity. Um, and also today, it's very common that it's not just one, you know, it's both spouses that are, you know, um soldiers as well. So. And then you have grandmas and grandpas that are still working. And so this is just a a really nice opportunity. And again, when you look at the reserves and the guard. Um, they don't necessarily have um a military base and have all of the luxuries that you have with that, you know. Because they're they're community members. There are members of our community and and our rural community. So um. And West Liberty has always taken great pride in our support of um the military and our veterans. And I think this is just a. Another wonderful step to show show that support. So I'm excited and. And yeah, they've shared that they'll do all the training and the administration will be minimal and um I know can spend some probably a little bit more time than I have with the with the discussion. So. Um, speaking from, you know, I'm passionate about it and personally, I think this is. A really nice opportunity, a wonderful opportunity for us here.
I know we uh talked about this for the active military currently, but it was also brought up in meetings for veterans in that. Still applicable. So I'm under um in my understanding that this is just a one year pilot.
Yeah.
Okay. And if this goes well, we can expand, see if we can expand that.
Okay.
To veterans or other even branches of the military.
Yeah, okay.
And this is something we have not agreed yet, but it will be coming back to us.
Right.
Yeah, which is maybe, you know, leads to the picture governmental limits to be minor.
Yep. Yep. Again, I mean, it's government. We we get it, you know, I mean, and and we're also working within different time zones and um but yeah, we. The the team has done a fantastic job. Um, we've all stayed in uh communication and um. And Ken has been very helpful in helping going over agreements when I haven't had enough time to look through them. So he's partnered. And went through that information and and um. And again, when one door opens, um, you know, hopefully it leads to some more opportunities in our community through these programs as well. So.
I also want to say on Friday was serendipitous. I answered the front desk at the career center at the university, which I usually don't do. I was walking by and it was ringing. And it was one of our students in the College of Law who was almost in tears. Because her and her husband have grill and she could not find anybody to take care of her two children and wanted to post on our. Kind of campus board that we use. And I was like, wow. And I told her about. This thing of coming down the pipeline um that I could help her now, but I also wanted to know that this was coming. And she literally broke out in tears. And was saying, is this for real? Like, you have no idea how much easier our life's going to be. Like. This is so wonderful. And she's like, I honestly was. What they she said she's major now and she it wants to be Colonel, which are very few Colonels that are women.
Absolutely.
And so she literally was was going to stop because of the childcare epidemic, like epidemic. But she's like, if you guys have this, I'm going to stay. So I think that's going to be a lot of the stories is that if they can find childcare for their families to continue and pursue those goals, we're going to change a lot of lives here. It's been good stuff. Uh, any other miscellaneous? Um, discussion? Not hearing none. Is there a motion for a term? No. Second. Okay, meeting adjourned.